All right, everybody. Good afternoon. And it is, what is it?
Turn your mics on.
June 6th, and it's 1:00 PM, so we will call to order the Curry County Budget Committee, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Curry County Human Resources looks like it's first up today. Frank?
Yes. Julie Swift would like to address the Budget Committee.
Good afternoon. Julie Swift, payroll and HR. So, I just want to let you know as far as wages and where we're at on the budget. So, we're in the middle of a wage study. I think most of you know that, being done by Portland State. We're also in union negotiations with Teamsters 206, which is the road department and the general classification of employees. So, you know, all of, all the wages, we're all in a salary schedule, and we have, we have ranges and steps that everybody's in. So, everybody's kind of, you know, the job descriptions are tied to those, and increases and steps and all that are all part of the union negotiations. And so, I was a little shocked to hear that the assessor's office was approved to do a 10% across-the-board increase on their payroll. Where'd that come from? I understand. We have problems with recruitment and retention. It's been an ongoing issue for at least the 25 years that I've been here. No matter what salary study we do, we're told that we are under market, you know? Not surprising. And the commissioners always make some sort of compensation to try and get us a little more, you know, even with the rest of the world. But I was really surprised to hear that the assessor was authorized to give 10% across the board to their employees, that the DA was going to get $50,000 more for his payroll. And I thought, what about the rest of the employment? What about the rest of the staff? Because none of that's been resolved, and none of that's been finalized, at least as far as those two big pieces go, union negotiations and the wage study. So, I just kind of want to make you aware that that's really out of the ordinary for how things have been done, which, you know, there's always the, geez, that's just the way it's always been done. But there are salary schedules and salary steps and things that are in place. You know, the Teamsters Sheriff's Office is locked into their contract for three years. They're getting a 3.4 cost of living. They get their steps. There's an escalator on insurance and stuff. So, I just want to make you aware of the things that are in place for the employees and how things are done. And so, to, to hear that you pick and choose on what office is going to get 10%, and then the rest of the county gets whatever.
So, just to be fair, no other department came in saying they were going to reduce their department size in order to increase their staff's salaries?
Right.
That's what the assessor did.
Okay.
So, it was, it was actually to a plus $26,000 benefit to the general fund?
But it's still taking, but it's still taking that group of employees out of what's already set in place. And where, where are they going to be? I mean, are they just, you know, going to have a whole another schedule for the assessor's office as opposed to the clerk's office or the finance department? Or, I mean, how, how are you going to do this? Because they are, most of those employees are union employees also. So, you have to keep that in mind.
I think Mr. Fitzgerald has a comment.
I do have a question because it was brought to us that, that the assessor's office, that people, when people leave the assessor's office to go to other departments for similar work, they're paid more elsewhere. Why is that?
Depends on the position they go into. If they go into a position that it's a higher range, then yes, they will be.
But if they're like positions, the position of the assessor was that, was that they're getting, for, for similar work, they're paying less, because they're paying, they were paying less than other like positions in other departments.
I can't answer that unless they're going into a position that's a different salary range, which I know, I believe the situation where someone left the assessor's office and went to the juvenile department, that was the case.
Would it make sense, would it make sense then to change those, those job descriptions to put them in a higher range?
Just because you've got a different title doesn't mean it's going to be a higher range. That's part of the salary study. That's part of the comparison. And I've talked about how we used to do the salary evaluations on job descriptions for many years, and there was a factor piece, and we don't have that.
We don't have that.
We don't. But you can't, you also have to be, there is pay equity law, and you've got like positions making like wages. And so, so part of that whole piece is looking at those job descriptions and looking at those positions and seeing, you know, what's comparable. It may not be the same title, but it could be the same education and experience requirements. Even though they're a totally different position, and they're doing different things, if they've got the basic education, knowledge, and experience, they very well could come out in the same range. So, you can't just, you can't just go by a title of a position and say, well, it deserves to make more.
Go ahead, John. So, Julie, you know, if we, if we could go back in time a couple of weeks and say, hey, Julie, this is what we want to do. HR, you're HR payroll lady. This is what we'd like to do. This is what assessor's office is wanting to do. Can we do this? How can we do this?
You would have to have, you would have to have positions that are doing significantly different than what they're doing now to possibly put them in a different range at a different salary. So, you know, part of, part of what we deal, part of what we run into with the wage study is, you know, you've got a, a department specialist or a deputy 1, 2, 3. Well, the only difference in those positions, they're doing the same duties, but one's been here a little bit longer, so they say, okay, that's a deputy 2 now. But really, there's no difference in the duties. So, that's, that's one of the things that we're running into with the study. I mean, what, what is significant enough to make that position not worth more, but at a higher range?
So, my, my situation is that I was made aware that, that the assessor's office is losing people, and the allegation was they're moving elsewhere in the county to do similar or simpler tasks, or, oh, you can do that, but the facts are the facts. That's, you know, it's a, it's a complex thing that's going on in the assessor's office, and, and when they're moving, they're getting paid more. And here's, here's a person who I believe came in, and I'm sure that she's qualified for anything in the assessor's office, but she was able to come in at a little higher, higher rate than I think what was being offered at the assessor's office. And, and so, how do we, I think, I think what, I think what John was asking is, how do we?
Make it equi- equity?
Fix that. So, so, so changing a job description, that's not going to do it.
No.
Giving different tasks. Who's going to do it? Paying them more money? So, I mean, that's, that's, that's the issue.
Well, I think part of, you know, part of the study that Portland State's doing is taking those positions and comparing them across the state to counties with like, mostly like population. And we're waiting to see how that comes out. And it may, it may end up that some of those positions go into a different range that's paid higher because of the comparable wages.
So, yeah, I just think that, I mean, when we're talking about going across the state, what, what the issue that was brought to me was interdepartmental. Because, because we're losing, we're, we're having, this is the, this is the friction I had with Dave, actually, when, when Dave wanted to, you know, I mean, there, there are many facets of, of interdepartmental transfers here. And, and my, my, my position was that, that not just the, the feelings of the employees need to be, need to be weighted. We also need to look at the department heads, and everybody else needs to be consulted here. So, so Kylie, you might, well, I mean, so when you, you brought up the issue, you wanted to, you wanted to change, you wanted to, you know, you're not going to
Fill this?
Fill that position. And then you wanted to reallocate the money, some of that money, to, to be able to pay your people more so that you could retain them. So, so Julie's saying that there is, that that's not doable.
Why? Well, I'm just saying that the way, the way that our structure is currently with the positions in different salary ranges, those ranges are across the board for all positions. So, and
But they're not, because I'm behind. So, how is behind being the same?
Behind in what?
My people are being paid less than other people within the county.
Are they in the same ranges? In the same steps?
They're at the same, they're in the same starting positions except that there's positions advertised that are the same position, being paid more in the door than the people that I have in the same position I'm advertising for. So, if you can make that fair, which it's not, this is where I'm at. You're saying they're all the same, but they're, they're not the same.
Well, but you can, but if someone's hired into a position, it may be the same salary range, but if there's a bona fide reason to pay them higher in the range than entry level experience?
So, so I, the, you brought the union piece.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, that's a pretty critical piece. Was this brought up in negotiations at all?
Not yet. They're waiting for the salary study to come out. They're waiting for the results. We haven't even talked to compensation and, and healthcare yet. We're supposed to meet with them again, I believe, on the 20th.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that Kylie brought up was that a lot of these positions that were not being paid the same as other departments in similar duties were doing some of the duties of this position that had been eliminated, that she was proposing to be eliminated. So, they had, they had already assumed some of those duties. So, they were doing additional jobs. Is there a way to accommodate that in there in a, you know, 90-10, 85-15?
It also be, is, it also depends on the nature of the duties. I mean, is it just different tasks? Is it more tasks that don't necessarily require more knowledge or experience, but it's just more on their plate? I mean, that's, that's, that doesn't necessarily change the overall value of the job if it's just more tasks.
Well, I think, I think that, that particular job, I think, I think the way Kylie described it last week was that it was a pretty complex and, and, I mean, high-level job. And then, then Wendy and, and others assumed those duties, and they just absorbed all those duties, and they didn't get compensated more. And I mean, I, you know, I, I think, I, I feel like that, that, you know, if I'm, if I'm just advocating for the county itself, then I'm going to be like, huh, good. But if I'm trying to, if I'm trying to retain quality employees, I want to, I want to pay them for what they're doing, and I want to, when, when you come in and, and, and take that load, then I think we ought to, you know, it's not like the job disappeared and we don't have that need anymore. They've just assumed it. So, I think that would be, because they're not, I mean, there, there are more, there are more tasks, and they're complex tasks.
So, maybe it's a work out of class situation.
What?
Maybe it's a working out of class situation. Work out of class is usually, though, if you're doing the duties of a higher level, and if it's just absorbing the duties of not necessarily, not necessarily a higher level, you know, and I guess you could get creative on how to do it.
I can get creative.
I don't understand what you're trying to say.
We need to stay within the union negotiations would probably be the most important thing. Because if you get out of whack in one department, that's going to reverberate all the way through.
Right.
But I think what, like with what Ted was mentioning, is the appraiser analysis, is that an open position mark, being advertised right now?
No. It's open, but it's not being, we can't even fill our stuff.
Okay, but it's an open position?
Right.
Okay. So, that's an open position within the budget. Couldn't potentially employees be a half-time FTE? That salary range be divided?
If they have those duties?
So, yeah.
If they're doing that job?
If they have those duties, we could split up the appraiser analyst, analyst?
Yeah.
Give them the quarter time, half time to try to get as close to
If they're, if they're actually doing that job?
Yeah.
If they're actually doing that job.
What about Wendy doing the tax collection now? I wasn't in charge when we absorbed that position. She's being the tax collector and not being paid for the tax collector, or the deputy tax collector.
And I think, but I think that's a, a lower salary range than what she's being paid also. So...
But it's in addition to what we're doing.
So, so, like you say, you know, if you
Out of class?
Get creative. I just don't see, I don't see, I'm not trying to stop this. I'm just trying, I'm trying to make it equitable to all employees, though. So, to take one department and say, we're going to increase every, them all by 10%, and you've left everybody else behind, that's not fair and equitable.
Well, it sounds to me like the remedy is to get creative, and to acknowledge the work they're doing and pay them for that work. And if we do, if we do things like split FTEs, I'm not sure, but I think, I think we need to do that. Because, because right now, also, if, you know, if we, I mean, right now, the assessor's office is, is hindered because of our existing situation.
So, you're, you're right, but what we need to do is we need to change everything. Because look at our budget. It's not working. Look at the people who are doing the work here. It's ineffective, and we need to change it. So, this doesn't work, so we've got to get creative. We've got to come up with a solution, and we've got to fix these problems. Because you're, Kylie's right. Kylie's 100% right in what she's doing.
So...
And, and, and we've got to be innovative and creative. You mentioned the DA's office, and I'm kind of confused with that. So...
I was told, I was told, and this is third hand, that they were told to put an extra $50,000 in the budget for wages.
That's, that's, yes, that's, that's correct. But how does that, I mean, the district?
It was, it was changing from a DDA 2 to a DDA 1?
One to two.
One to two.
Right. Which we put that in the budget.
Right.
It's there.
That was, that was the main part of that whole money.
Yeah, and that's, that's all been done.
Yeah, so that, that was the big crux of that 60.
Hmm.
That, that was the big move, was to adjust the, the position being recruited for.
To keep them.
Right.
Retained.
So, that, that's what, well, no, because we don't have a position. Oh, that filled. So, he was saying, I can't fill it because I need to go out and search for somebody with more experience, and it's going to take a higher salary range to get
So, so here's my question, then. If we're just going to kind of go off and do our own thing, why are we spending thousands of dollars on a wage study?
Great question.
Because the way it was done a couple of years ago was wrong.
So...
I'll tell you that.
So...
As far as placing positions and ranges and who's where, and it was
That was what Julie Schmelzer did that manually?
So, it's, 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 it's always healthy, right? It's healthy to do a wage study, right? At least every few years.
Well, we have, we're supposed to.
Probably no union that's not going to request that.
Right.
So, and I, and I, I understand, because all of this is going to come to you, right? In a, in some way, fashion, or form, it's going to end up coming to you saying, hey, but, what, hey, how, right? You're going to get, have to answer all those questions, and you really aren't given the information to be able to answer those questions. So, is it better to have you work with the assessor and, and the Director of Operations to come up with an amicable solution on this piece? Because we don't want to lose the, the wage study.
Right.
It's valuable.
I mean, I think it's, right now, and right now, what they're mostly doing, it took time to get the job descriptions all, how they wanted them, you know, how they should be, their uniform, and then mostly what they're doing is a market study. And so, so then, do we take that, and here's my question, because this piece isn't putting them in salary ranges, then do we take that market study and take the positions and put them wherever in our scale that they fit? Maybe that's what, maybe that's what it's going to come out to.
Maybe. But that might gets back to your, your, you know, working
Right.
But, you know, I, I totally understand the quandary that you're faced with. Like, I get it. 100%. So, you know, maybe that's, that's the route that we look at is, is offline, you guys working together. Because the salary study is going to tell us all what we know. We're, we're, we're way under, right? It's going to say, across the board, we're way under. And the hard part is, is there's not a lot we can do about that, right?
And then it comes back to you guys to decide, okay, so where do we find the money?
Right.
For those, for this.
Right. You know, and that was the creative part that Kylie was able to do, is saying, hey, this is what we're going to We're willing to, to do more with less, but I need to be able to pay my people accordingly to do that more.
And we need to figure out where that, where that works and how to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
Because no other department's that came in with that proposal, right? So, I think that was the part that was very like, oh, okay, that's great leadership. Good job, you know? You showed, so, there's still an answer. I think we can work it out through the right mechanisms and come up with a good solution, I feel. I mean, do you?
Yeah. I just, I just wanted you all to be aware of the things that are in play that we're dealing with.
Yeah.
The union negotiations are a big, it's a big part of it.
Yeah.
Because, because I'll tell you right now, when we were in negotiations a year ago with the road department, they said, we want 10% for everybody.
Yeah.
And now that union is double-sized because we've got the general population too. And so, if they come in and say, we want 10%, and then the commissioners go, oh, we can't afford 10%.
But then, yeah.
But if, if they can come up with it, I mean, if that department can come up with, that's what happened here, in my, in my view. And personally, I would like to see mandated services, I would like it to where, at the county, hey, I want to work for the, the assessor. I want to work at the clerk's office because they pay more, because it's a, it's a mandated, you know, service. So, but how we get there is, is
That's the question. How do we get there?
And correctly.
Yeah, so...
And equitably.
I'm sure, and this is, we got the money here in this, in this thing, so we need to creatively make it work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we have to change the budget. I think you just need to figure out how to make the personnel situation work.
I will also need another signed resolution, and it's due today, and that's my last thing.
Okay.
Right.
It's the same budget.
Okay.
Right? So, the budget is the same.
The budget is the same. It's just how are we going to make it work?
It's how we're going to make it work.
Because I, I have a phone call here in about 20 minutes with them, and they want to know where I'm at.
Your budget's not going to change.
So, you don't need another sign?
I said I'm not sure I can even do you.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just how do we, how do we get there?
Yeah.
So, thank you, because it would have been detrimental if you didn't bring this to our attention.
Yeah.
So, and I know it's not, it's not the popular conversation to have.
I'd like everybody to make a whole heck of a lot more money.
Absolutely. We understand.
When is the union negotiation usually closed?
We try to have it done before the 1st of July, but it doesn't always happen that way.
Yeah.
We, we didn't get started until last month.
Yeah.
Just because we're kind of waiting for the wage study, and it got pushed out, and then our computer issue, and so it's just taken longer than we expected.
Is it like every three years, that when they do a?
So, we're supposed to do an analysis every three years with the pay equity law.
Okay.
So, this is kind of our second round.
Typically, I mean, this year, obviously, gone through a lot of different things. So, typically, when is that wage study, or, yeah, wage study done? Just because I feel like, as we keep going in the budget, it's like we keep working on unknowns. It's like our wage study's going to come in after we've made the budget. And it's like, oh.
Yeah.
We started, we started the wage study. We got this contract signed, I think, in August last year, and we didn't actually get started on it until November. And they said it was, you know, a four to five-month window to get it done. So, obviously, we need to start sooner next time. But, you know, it's, it's the unknown, you know? Didn't know how long it was going to take.
Is it always done with PSU?
No. This is the first time we've dealt with them.
And who was it done with?
We worked, well, well, we worked with LGPI, Local Government Personnel Institute, for years with our salary committee program. Pay equity came out, I want to say, four or five years ago, and that's when Julie Schmelzer did, we started with a company called HR Answers, and it just, it didn't work. So, Julie took it upon herself just to do the whole thing herself. And that was in 2020 that that was put into play. So, this is kind of our first, first true round of doing the analysis.
We will never, we will never ask our Director of Operations to do that. Thank you very much.
Well, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be done by one person.
No.
And I think an outside source is much better because it takes out the favoritism and the, that kind of stuff, yeah.
I have a feeling I would be, I would be ordered.
We would have no more employees. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Well, next, I would like to announce that the books are reconciled through June as of yesterday. And so, I've already submitted a trial balance
Your, your speaker.
Turn your mic on, Frank.
There we go. Okay. I've already submitted a trial balance to the auditor, and then I've requested a timeframe from them because we had asked for a audit extension, and they're granting us one. The penalty when you didn't make your audit timeline was the state would penalize you financially, was holding some of your apportionments from them. But they now have done away with that. So, I was told that there's really no fiscal penalty for being late. But I could still go ahead and submit a, a request for an audit extension, and I'd just like to do that, to have that on record. And then they asked, well, before you do that, get a timeline from your auditor as to when the report will be finished. In conjunction with that, I haven't yet got the final or what the new fund balances are. From a cursory look at the trial balance, I didn't see any surprises, but I don't know what the final amounts are for each, for each fund. So, I just wanted to share that, that that was done. So, now we can start on working on 22 and 23 fund balances. One thing, as I, we started going through the new updates, because we tried to incorporate all the changes that were brought up at the last meeting. And what we did was, some of the things were to do away with some of the allocations in the ARP, such as the housing, HBT, the salmon study. So, that freed up the $1,268,000. We split that up between two years, because we don't know how many bills are going to come in this year. So, reserved $500,000 for this year to meet any costs that come through. And then if we don't use that, that money will be rolled over to the next year. So, we budgeted, and you'll see as we go through this, $768,000 for IT for next year. When it comes to the LATCF, we are proposing a transfer for the 22-23 jail deficit of $1.9 million. The grant that we got was 1 point, almost 1.2. So, that would leave a balance of about $291,000. And as we discussed, we expect to get another allocation of 2.2 again. And against that, we're proposing the jail transfer for 23-24, which we're anticipating to be about 1.9, almost $2 million. $100,000 for the veterans building, and then the second payment for the CC Airport, $38,500. When all is said and done, that leaves of all the ARP and the LATCF monies, $358,000 that isn't allocated. As we're going through, there's a summary sheet that we'll go over. And as you see, the summary sheet, after the general fund transfers monies to the other programs, we still have an overall deficit of $746,000. So, with that, let's dive into the changes.
So, Frank, can we just tip these over? I mean, is that how?
Yeah, you can just tip these over, and then if you want, you can insert them and replace the pages in, in your budget book. The first area that was changed, and Elizabeth is the one that was the driving force behind getting all this updated. We took out the irregular salary. That was $14,000, so salary and benefits.
And treasurer.
And out of the treasurer, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Out of the treasurer. And out of the treasurer, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, out of the treasurer office. And so that reduced, um, their, uh, request from the general fund of, to 190,000. Next, we come to the tax collector, and as we just discussed...
Wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
You said, um, 200, the request from the general fund and the treasurer was 290?
190, no, 190,000, 190. Next, uh, we come to the tax collection department, and as we just discussed, we incorporated a 10% increase to salaries. So that changes their request from the general fund to 224,002.72. Then in the assessor's office, likewise, we increased salaries 10%. And so that request from the general fund is 843,000. And those were the changes that were made in the general fund. Yes?
Can I say one thing about the, about the treasurer's budget, please?
Yes, please.
I, I need to have this, uh, on the record. I've been approached by almost every department over the course of my tenure here. Just, as you know, been fraught with many, many problems, but this is one of them. The, the, um, turnover sheet issue where, where, where deposits are made, but then, then the, uh, individual departments have been, have been unable to track them, because, and the, and the, the, um, organizational requirement or, or method that was used by the, developed by the treasurer's office resulted in time savings for the treasurer's office, specifically the, his, his assistant. But because of the, of the lack of, of organization of the, of the, you know, it, it was not, um, it was not organized by time received or, or by department specifically. You had to go back through and, and, and each, each department would get an entire report of all the deposits, which required each department then to task one of its, one or more of its people for a substantial time, like hours every, every month, to address that and get it sorted out. So when we look at that, when we look at the treasurer's budget, um, a lot of, the, the way that it stands right now, those, that, the work that, that normally would have been done by an organized, organized treasurer's budget has actually been farmed out to the other departments. And I feel like those other departments need to be compensated for the amount of time that they've had to take out of their own, but they didn't, they didn't budget that time into their own, into their own departments, and so, but they had to make that time. So, so each one, I mean, it, it's, I've asked departments to add it up, and from what it looks like to me, it would be a total of at least one FTE. So it's a, it's a substantial expense. And, um, I had proposed an alternative that, um, that would have resulted in, it would have addressed the problem. We, it was an alternative that resulted in a different, uh, basically a ticket system through IT, where you'd be able to track each deposit. And we paid IT to do that, and then the treasurer declined to adopt that as well. So I would also like to have that money that, that we spent with IT, that, you know, I think that should be out of his budget as well. It's, it's a problem, but I mean, un- until somebody's willing to step up and, and address the actual efficiencies, like, like you said, Brad, we need to, we need to make things different. And, and one way that you do it is you, you look at the situation, and you say, we've got, okay, here's an inefficiency. Are we on board to fix it? And if we're not on board to fix it, then we're not fixing anything. So...
So let me get, so we did turnovers a certain way years ago, and then we changed it.
They changed it because their printer broke down, I think. Their printer broke down, and so they couldn't, they couldn't use a certain type of printer that, that made a, that, that, it, it wouldn't work with the Casell, I think, with, I believe that thing, that their old printer, they couldn't replace that one that interfaced with their, with the, um, I think the Casell system. For some reason, they were, they had to depart from the old system that was, that was organized. So...
That, that was, then it put the burden on the department?
Then, then a new methodology was created, and the burden was passed to the individual departments to do the sorting out. And when that was brought to the attention of the, um, of the treasurer's office, uh, and a fix was, a fix was proposed, that fix was, was, uh, declined. So, um...
Can we re-incline it, or?
Well, we could, we could ask him if he'd like to proceed with, with the fix, so that we could, we could track that. I think that would be...
Or we can take the regular salary and move it to the departments that are having to...
We could, except, except...
But that's not cost efficient.
Yeah, the effect, the effective, the effective method would be to adopt, uh, adopt an alternative that allows each department to then track each deposit, so that, so that the departments are then ultimately responsible, and they can, and they can follow up with the treasurer's office and say, where are you with this ticket? And that, and it, it's a trackable thing, and it, and it makes sense. Um, that, and that way, you know, once you're doing that, then you can start seeing where the inefficiencies are. But other, otherwise, otherwise, if we're just, if we're just transferring, I mean, we could, I, I don't think it's in the best interest of the county to transfer that money out of the budget of the treasurer. But if, if we're not able to, if we're not able to get any sort of a remedy, then that would be what I propose.
Why doesn't, why doesn't Dave wanna do it?
Um, Dave's employee, uh, declined to do it. Dave did wanna do it. Dave agreed to do it until he was countermanded by his employee, but who no longer works there. So it might be something to, uh, request again. But probably be better if the commissioners requested it than me.
I, I request it. I know you do.
I wanna be efficient, so if that's the way to be efficient, then, okay.
Cause it worked at one time, right? I mean, that's, that's the way it was done, and...
It, it, it used to work, it used to work. Then it became really inefficient, and now we have a, we have a proposal that was developed by, and I'm not taking any credit for it, cause I, I'm not that kind of a thinker. But it was, it was, um, uh, Dan from IT working with, um, I think it was Dan from IT, um, yeah, working with, uh, Rivia.
This is the email ticket system?
Yeah.
And Dave was for that, yeah.
Initially.
Yeah. So anyway, that would be a thing that I would recommend that he brought up to him again.
Yeah.
And that doesn't change his budget? Or does it add something into his budget for IT?
Um, well, I mean, if, if, if we're happy to, if we adopt that methodology, then I would think that the general fund would pay for that, for that, for that IT system, because it's, it helps every single department.
Benefit, yeah.
Right. But if, but if, if we're up against a stone wall, then I, then, since, since I didn't ask for that development until I got the agreement of the treasurer's office, and then it was later declined, that, 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 that expense would rightfully go to the treasurer's office. So, so hopefully what we could do is we could move forward in that, and then in hiring a, an additional person in the treasurer's office, that person would be able to fulfill that task in an efficient manner that, that, uh, satisfied the other departments.
And just to be clear, not to hire an additional person, but to hire the open position?
Hire the open person, open position, correct, yes.
Makes sense.
All right.
So, um, you started it off by saying, you know, about the treasurer, or about the assessor, and the, the additional duties that were put on the assessor's office, right?
They, it was, well, they, they had been previously performed, but then that position, since it was difficult to fill it, they weren't getting it filled, they, they just, they had to perform the duties anyway. So they, they came up with a better, better mousetrap, and they spread those duties around, and then they, and they, and they're getting it done.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Frank, just to rewind for a second, cause I'm having a hard time looking forward with the big looming question on my head. So after reconciling 21, 22, right now, if we use all ARP leftover and undispersed funds and LATCF funds, we're left with 300,000. And, and the IT stuff isn't included in that?
No. The, uh, they are, the money that was in the ARP, because we declared the emergency, that's devoted to the IT information. So we reserved out of the 1.2...
Okay, okay.
50,000 for this year, in case, cause we don't know what, how, what kind of bills are coming in.
Right. It's not gonna cover ongoing expenses, but it's covering our current...
Exactly.
Expenses.
Right, and then...
That second LATCF fund is probably gonna be the...
Yeah.
One that covers a lot of our ongoing...
Well, on that second one, what we're proposing is that we cover the jail, we do the, um, let's put it away.
The vetted building and the...
The CC airport contribution. So that leaves at the end about 348,000.
That's using both LT, LATCF funds?
Yes.
Yes, cause we wanna pay off this fiscal year, 22, 23, the jail deficit of 1.9. So that was our suggestion, that we use the money that we got in to pay this year's, so, yeah. And then use the second wave to pay the jail again for next year.
There's a little vein coming out of here. Is that what that is? Are you gonna blow?
That leaves a 358,000 cushion. But that's it. And, and once that one-time money's gone, then that, that's it.
Gone.
And, and no capital improvement projects?
None.
So for the veterans' billing?
I don't call that a capital improvement project.
That's a capital...
Savings.
That's a maintenance project.
It is a maintenance project.
No, the real capital improvement is the tech infrastructure.
Yeah, it is.
So, yes, Jay, what you're seeing is what I'm seeing, which is being able to continue this budget for a year, and then if no, if there is no solution, then, um, we're out of money.
Not just out of money. We're out of services.
Right. We're out of money to provide services.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, the bleak picture.
So, so using both LT, LATCF funds?
To run the jail, basically, to pay the 1.9 deficit, yeah.
Yeah, because we're using, we're proposing to use this allocation that we received for this year's deficit.
We're at a deficit this year.
Yes. Well, the jail, well, last year.
Last year.
And then the, we're projecting another deficit, so we're proposing to use the new allocation to cover that jail deficit.
So my question then is, is, so we're running at 1.9 deficit in the 22, 23 fiscal year for the jail?
Yes.
So we budgeted, we, we budgeted 2 million in deficit without essentially the money? Or did we, oh, we, we, well, we would have, we didn't get the LT, LATCF funds until last fall. So that means that we basically, the previous budget was...
Yeah.
Was short.
2 million bucks?
Yeah.
And approved.
Well, it wasn't approved, I had to carry it over, cause according to the auditor, there's, I didn't have the bucks, but we also didn't have all the true facts. There was that 9, almost 1 million dollars that wasn't posted. If I would've known that was there, that would've gone to pay that. So... So where did it go? Where did it go? Yeah. That's what we need to find out, right? Because they just closed the, they just got the bank reconciliation caught up, so we kinda really need to know where we're sitting at. And then there was another one this year, so like one... That's not posted yet, but that, that's what we were expecting, yeah, so...
Yeah, that one is on, on the C, this one.
Right.
Okay, so...
Now, the sheriff's program is an expensive program, and the patrol and the jail consistently require tr- massive transfusions to keep the programs going.
But CivCrim Patrol is getting 3.1 million from the road fund.
We already have budgeted a, um, uh, there was a budgeted a, a transfer. And so they're having an additional, uh, deficit on top of that. So to combine what the transfer and the deficit to make them whole, we require the, the 3, 3 million dollar transfer.
Right.
So Frank, if we didn't use the road funds or all these, you know, the tribal, all that, and the ARP?
If we hadn't used the rose, the road fund in the past, we would've faced this issue a couple of years earlier.
Yeah.
Two, probably three years ago.
Yes, exactly.
At this point, we'd be like 7 million dollars if we didn't use it this year.
We'd be around 6.
Yeah.
6 million? Deficit.
So if you remember our conversations over the past couple of years in the budget community, it's like, this is incoming, and we have the lowest, or one of the lowest,
Tax base.
Property tax bases in the state of Oregon, is what we have.
Yep.
And so we've been paying that tax base for a long time. It has not changed, it's not going to change. But what has changed is how much everything costs. So, you know, think about your own finances for a second.
Well, the biggest thing that changed is we didn't get ONC funds, which was offsetting the low rate of tax. And then everything was expensive.
And then everything was more expensive. So you have your paycheck coming in, but everything is costing more and more and more and more, and your paycheck never catches up to those cost increases. So eventually, you don't have any money. And unfortunately, that's where we're at. And, you know, this community is going to have to look at this like all of you are right now, and say, okay, um, do we want the services that the county provides, or not? And they're gonna have to make that decision. That's what's coming. And, you know, we've been, we've been talking about this, and the, and the Band-Aid has been the road funds, but the days of talking about this are over. And we'll get through this year with the one-time monies we have. But we have got to put something on the ballot in the next cycle.
Yeah, there's a general election coming up, so...
And so we, we have to do that. And, um, and we have to figure out what this community wants to do, and, and follow their direction. But those are, those are the options.
Now, like I said prior, I know in my own personal situation, we looked at the tax rates of different counties, and not knowing the backstory...
Right.
You know?
Looks like the place to go, right?
Exactly, exactly. But now that I'm sitting on this side, it's like, wow, you know? And it's been like this, I don't know how many years, and with no change.
Well, since the ONC funds went away, pretty much, or they kept getting reduced, and then they went, basically went away.
Now, are, are there, are there, uh, other potential fixes that, um, are, are in the works? Yes, I mean, we're looking at every option we can, and that is getting our timber receipts back. Another option that, um, that I wanna pursue, um, is if we are, if the government is going to force windmills into our ocean, then I would like to, to, explore revenue options from that, um, which there, there may be in terms of some type of licensing, or some types of, uh, mandating the government to, to pay for the damage they're doing to this county. Uh, and we will look at all of those, but none of those are immediate solutions. Those are on the horizon, but, uh, there are certainly no guarantees from that. But they will be explored. We will definitely do everything we possibly can. And, and hopefully, the timber issue will make its way to the Supreme Court sooner than later. But we all know how those things go too. So, for anybody listening, that's the current situation, and that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with. And we are going to need the community's input, we're going to need the community's help to... And we are going to need the community's input, we're going to need the community's help to, uh, know what, what, how they want to proceed.
Absolutely.
Well, and, and in addition to that, the citizens of Gold Beach just voted in a school bond or something. So that'll raise their taxes, so that's, that, that doesn't help our chances of getting something passed when they've already, you know. So it's, it's just, uh, just a tough one.
Got a lot of hard work ahead. So I guess that's it, we did a lot of hard work. But we have one, one...
One window of opportunity.
Well, and one sole focus. I mean, there's not really much, I mean, I mean, that has to be the majority of our effort moving forward.
Well...
Is this, this, this... Ensuring that the county can continue to provide at least the level of services currently providing.
And maybe one of you will know this, maybe one of you will know this on this committee, but correct me if I'm wrong. If, if we were to, uh, we were to propose a levy for the sheriff's department, to fund the sheriff's department independently, and that levy were to fail, and basically this county would then not be able to provide the minimum mandated services required by the state, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the state steps in and then takes over. And if the state were to do that, I believe they would tax everyone here. And that tax would be greater than a proposed levy.
But Brad, I'm... I'm thinking though, Brad, they're not going to do that until they exhaust the road funds.
Well, and, and so the, the, we can't use the road funds to fund anything other than the sheriff.
Yeah, but all it took, all it took was a letter.
It did.
So all it has to take again is another letter that says, okay, now you can do it. So I, you know, I don't know, I, but, y- yeah.
But that just continues to kick the can down the road. It's still the same can, uh, that's been getting kicked to the point of where we are today.
And it still doesn't fix any of the infrastructure problems. It doesn't even begin to address them.
No. But I guess as we, as, as we, you know, look further at that, we'll have more solid answers and we'll know, you know, we'll know what to, what to tell the people when it's time to, uh, ask for what they want. But, but that is my understanding that the government will step in and they will provide the minimum mandated services at a level that is appropriate for this county and, and I...
They'll pay for it.
We'll, we will all pay for it.
We'll pay for it.
Either one way or the other.
Well, and we also wouldn't have jurisdiction over at that point.
No, we'd give up control, which is something I don't want to do.
Right, I don't think that's definitely not a popular choice.
No, not something I want to do. But that's where we're at, right?
No, I agree, I understand. I want to have input and control in my backyard.
Sure, and, you know, and I think that's, you know, that's really how you have to look at it, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, on that bright note, I guess I can continue. With the next tab, uh, section was, uh, dealing with the sheriff's jail. And we removed, um, the contribution from ARP because that money is now being tasked for the emergency. And so we, that's why we're proposing the transfer to come from LATCF. And if that, uh, transfer is approved, then the jail would be balanced. Oops, keep hitting this. The next section that we modified per the last meeting was other special revenues, and the first one was the American Rescue Plan. We removed the allocation that we discussed. Uh, we had five hundred thousand dollars for housing, we removed that. We had the, um, I don't know what HTOF stands for, we removed that, the SARM study was removed. So we removed those. Also, we removed the, the money to the motor pool, two hundred and fifty thousand. And we, as I said, we split the, the difference, we put five hundred thousand reserved for this year, so we can meet those expenses as they come in. And then we set up seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, uh, for infrastructure for next year. The next section we addressed was the, um, community development. With planning, the, we had to touch several programs because people's salaries are split. So when we reduce an FTE in one, go ahead.
The code enforcement, um, position that we removed, so it's to be the split, and I put that in the notes. So a little bit of one, two, and then we'll get the plan, and then that code enforcement.
So, yeah, that's why we had to adjust those three budgets. And at the end of the day, those adjustments also made the, those programs in community development balance. The, the next section, also in community development, that we touched was economic development. And we increased, um, their materials and services by the amount for the PIO. And we reduced the salary for the director since we, we won't be replaced on the FTE. And then for emergency management, we were able to get the information, Elizabeth spoke with the, the director. So we increased the, the revenue side based on the grants that they were looking at. There was sixteen thousand dollars for the FBA grant. We increased the donations up to one hundred and sixty-six thousand. And then we decreased the transfer from the general fund down to two hundred and seventy-two. We also, excuse me, increased professional services. And so those adjustments made, um, emergency services balance. Then the last section that we adjusted was the, um, administrative services. For the, uh, the commissioner's office, we were able to, uh, increase the contingency up to seventeen hundred dollars. That's a small increase. And then for information technology, uh, we show that we have the transfer from the RP fund of seven hundred sixty-eight thousand going into that program. And both of those end up balancing. So are there any questions for me or for Elizabeth?
Catching up still.
Okay, sorry.
So what information are we missing still, Frank?
Uh, the last piece is, once I'm able to gather the information from the reconciliation, so I know exactly what our fund balances are. Other than that, um, this is, the budget is best we can put together with the information that we had. Because even, I'm very happy that I have my computer, for example, but I still can't print. And when I do, I have to shoot it to other people.
Yeah.
You know, so there's still a few obstacles, but, uh, as I said at our very first meeting, the OR is aware of our situation. And so they're not expecting a perfect budget.
And so the money that Elizabeth found, we still don't know?
We, we have to track that down, I don't know, I can't address what happened to it.
Okay.
So the twenty-twenty-one year was audited and...
It's me, they, they've done their field visit, excuse me, but they haven't issued the, uh, the audit report yet.
Twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
Oh, twenty-twenty-one, I'm sorry. That was audited, yes.
Okay, and so we knew what the ending balances were then. So going into then the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, we have reconciled, but we do not know what the ending balances are.
No, I don't know.
Technically, we don't know if we are ahead or behind going into the current fiscal year.
That's correct. I can only give you a summary judgment from what I'd looked at. And we look to be pretty much in the same place with the exception of the road funds.
Pretty much the same place, being one point nine?
In debt.
In debt.
Yeah, the, the, the road fund did transfer some money to the sheriff's, but that one point nine transfer wasn't made. So that's what created the deficit in the jail.
Okay, so then we're starting with from twenty-two being one point nine, and you're going to take that money for that year? No, it's not coming out of the LATCF, that's for the twenty-two, twenty-three season, twenty fiscal year.
Well, the, we, it, the deficit carried over into twenty-two.
Okay.
So that's why it's there. So we're proposing to use the LTCF to take care of that deficit.
And, and you don't know when we're going to get the, the audit report back?
I asked for her to give me a timeframe, and she said that she was going to give me an estimate. And I think, well, everything is done with the exception of what they call the MDA, which is we give a description of changes and what, um, approaches we're going to take to any recommendations they have. And then, um, they can release it.
But they said by Q one, twenty-two, twenty-three should be reconciled, and we should have a very clear picture of where we're going now.
If we have beginning balances.
Right.
We need beginning balances first.
Right.
To find out how far behind we are.
The true number.
The true number, right.
Yes.
All right, so, and we're, and we're still trying to find where the money Elizabeth found.
Nine hundred and forty-one thousand or something like that.
So what's your recommendation and how we proceed then, Frank?
Well, is JJ here?
No. No.
The, the, the stumbling block is to, for us, we have to, um, advertise our hearing. And so I'm not sure what kind of lead time the newspaper recommends.
Five days prior?
Because he was saying they changed their requirement, now it's even longer, so.
I think it might, two weeks, I think.
It might be for the county now, so, um, you can't do it, you can't do it less than five, and you can't do it more than thirty. So county requirement for the bigger budget, I think, changed.
Oh, you're talking about the, I was talking about the actual note time requirement to get it into the newspaper.
Oh, to get it into the newspaper, it's two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the real stumbling block, so my recommendation is, this is the best information that we have at this time. The auditor took a quick look at the trial balance, but they haven't actually gone through it. But they didn't say any big smoking guns. And what we had discussed before was that if there is a, a material difference, I can issue a restatement of beginning balances
Okay.
to correct that. So my recommendation would be to move forward with the budget as it is, knowing that we probably have several budget revisions in our future.
What's the last possible day we can do that?
So there are alternatives to publication, if you publish it on your website.
I think the sixteenth.
And you publish it online with the newspaper. There are some alternatives now besides just printing it in the paper, but you have to do both, I believe.
I'm not aware of those.
I wonder if Ted is.
Well, I mean, regardless, we're up against the window.
Yeah.
So...
So the sixteenth of June is, is two weeks. That's a Friday, next Friday.
No, but what's a, when do we have to have this completed, Frank?
Well, the, the law states that the budget has to be adopted by June thirtieth.
Okay.
So we were proposing to have a meeting on the twenty-first.
So that's, that's kind of our, our hard line there. That's, that's, that's the line in the sand is the twenty-first.
Well, unless you call it a meeting on the thirtieth, which is a Friday, so.
Yeah, but we would have to publish...
You'd have to still publish by the sixteenth, probably.
So we'd have to publish the sixteenth to meet the thirtieth?
Two weeks, yep.
Which means that we would have to, we would have to have a decision by the sixteenth on how we're going to proceed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Will that time help, Frank?
Would anything change?
Um, we should have to know what our beginning balances are. But as far as the information presented here, it won't change. We would know, I think, we could give you the information, what happened to the, the nine hundred or the million dollars that we, we got, and then we would know our beginning balances.
Okay. So I don't want to use the sixteenth as a hard line, I'm not comfortable with that.
It's too hard.
So, um, my first thought is maybe to look at the thirteenth. And, um, that would give a one-week window of time
Okay.
to, uh, hopefully gather that information. And then if not, we have to make a decision on that day. Is everyone comfortable with that, or?
Next Tuesday.
Is there some discussion?
It would be nice to know what our beginning balances are. I mean, I'd feel more comfortable, um, I, 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 I say that very lightly because I'm not real comfortable with the budget at all. But I would feel more comfortable knowing what our beginning balances are and, um, knowing that at least the, two years ago was at least mostly settled, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's, they've made a lot of strides in just a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, you guys have been, your efforts have been commendable, for sure. Any other thoughts?
The time works best for you guys.
Good, fresh, good part of the day on the thirteenth.
How's mine?
So morning?
I can make it work, yeah.
So let's, let's do morning on the thirteenth, um, in case it goes long and we need more time.
Okay.
So how about nine AM Tuesday the thirteenth? Any objections to that? All right, uh, there's no public here, so there's no public comment. And without any public comment, then, um, we will adjourn from this meeting with the next scheduled meeting to be Tuesday the thirteenth at nine AM.
Very good.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.